Okay, great. Yep, there he is. But wait.
I don't have microphones, I'm gonna have to project.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it is.
Awesome. So that will take us to additions and deletions for the agenda. Do we have any today?
Staff has one change this evening to the agenda. Item 9C has been pulled from the agenda. Staff has notified individuals who reached out to the city with public comment, as well as updated the website and our agenda mailing list.
Great, thank you. That'll take us to item 3 for presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I get the privilege to introduce to you Casey Anderson, who is Recreation's new coordinator and will oversee classes, promotions, and the community center. Casey is from Chico, a New York City resident, where she graduated from in June of 2022 with a double major in politics and legal studies. At 15 years old, Casey earned an American Red Cross lifeguard certification and began working at a local swimming pool in Chico during high school. After moving to Santa Cruz, Casey was employed by County Parks at the Simpkins Family Swim Center as head lifeguard where she worked until joining the city. During her time with the county, Casey realized how much she enjoyed providing individuals with recreational opportunities and is excited to be part of the Capitola Recreation Team. Council, additionally, I would like to comment that the recent storms has given Casey the opportunity to shine. During Casey's time with the county, she worked as a CZU shelter worker and has been a huge asset to the city as we opened the shelter, as we changed the community center into a shelter. As we have been quickly responding to the dynamic work created by the storm, she has proven resourceful and dedicated to service. Recreation is happy to have her as part of our team, and we look forward to what Casey will contribute to the city. And so I present to you Casey Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First off, I want to say thank you to Nikki for introducing me and also just being a great support system as I have started my role the past couple of months. Also, I just wanted to say I'm really excited to see where this role takes me. The past couple of weeks has really shown me how much of a team the city of Capitola is, and I'm really excited to continue on in the future. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Casey. Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you.
Yeah, and what a time for you to start. We appreciate your efforts and no time like the present. We'll need you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and then do we have a report on closed session?
Good evening, Mayor and council members and Capitola community. A closed session was had on the item on the agenda and direction was given to staff. On the items on the agenda, there were three closed sessions and direction was given to staff. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks. And also, staff, do we have any additional materials?
Staff received public comments on items 9D, 9C, and 9D. Those public comments were posted on the website and are available for members of the public when they come to view online. All these public comments received for item 9C were responded to to let them know that the item has been removed from the agenda and will return in February.
Great. So we will move to all communications. This is by members of the public. So these, any of these communications are to address the city council on any consent items on tonight's agenda or any topic that is not on our general government section.
Hi, Mayor, council, and may please, uh, excuse me, Mayor Kaiser, may please the council. My name is Stephen Woodside. I just came off shoveling sand into sandbags along the river where I spent most of my life and just want to thank the staff, the entire Capitola staff, for doing such an outstanding job during the recent floods. We're not over it yet, but I just wanted to come and express my gratitude to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public? Or out there on the interwebs?
Nobody has their hand raised up.
Great. All right, we can go to staff and city council comments. Any comments? Staff? Do you have? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
First, I just wanted to do a little bit of a brief explanation about why I am holding a portable mic there now. It isn't actually a game show. With the recent weather that we had, we had multiple power surges through City Hall, and unfortunately, it cooked a couple of these guys. For the time being, we're having to make do with a portable mic, and then I'll be sharing with the city clerk when she'll get into the comments later on this evening. And then secondarily, we'll be talking more about the storm, so I will give you more of an update on where we are with our emergency planning in a second. Thanks.
I have a quick comment. Yeah, absolutely. I just want to, again, thank staff for all their hard work over the last week or so, since the storms and all of the community members who have wanted to volunteer and provide donations and have reached out to find out how they can be a part of the recovery here in our town. I had a, I also want to thank the Community Foundation for their work in managing the financial donations. I met last night with the steering committee that's looking at how these financial donations will be distributed to our community members and our businesses. And as of last night, there was an initial commitment of $100,000 to come into our city, the first round of which will be for grants for food service businesses specifically, and I think that those were some of the hardest hit in our village. There will be some steering committee members in the village, hopefully tomorrow, but definitely very soon, for business owners to get information about how they can apply for this funding. And if anyone has any questions or doesn't see a business representative or isn't reached out to, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I would be happy to connect you with the right person. Great, that's awesome information. And yeah, just going off that, we had a pretty interesting visit on, what day was that? Wednesday? Tuesday of the governor, and that was really, really cool to have the support, not only from our local people, but from the higher-ups. And again, just want to echo what Kristen said, too. Just, it's been, it's been really amazing to work with such amazing staff members that we have in the city and our community members as well. So for all of you people that have stepped up, thank you so much. So we can go to consent items. The consent items are enacted by one motion in the form listed below. So no separate discussion if any council member wants to pull a consent item or make a motion. I assume of consent items 8A, B, and C? One second. Great, we have a motion and a second. May we please have a roll call?
House Member Brooks?
Aye.
House Member Clark?
Aye.
House Member Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kaiser?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9, which is general government. We have 9A, which is our staff update on the winter storm event. Our recommended action here today is to receive the update. And, oh, fun stuff regarding the winter storm. Great.
All right, thank you, Mayor. In a second, I'll pull this up. Wait. Sorry, I went too fast.
Sweetie, you can decide because item C is removed, we're gonna go on to item D. Oh, God.
Thank you. Can you take the top or do you just place that?
No, I can't.
What if you end the slideshow and start over? We can still see it this way, though, too. I mean, we could.
It's supposed to run through all of these, though.
For your patience, everyone.
We're in business, people. Wow. After all these years, you think we know how to share a screen, but new challenges. Okay, Alexander, how does that look on Zoom for you?
It doesn't look great. I can see the, it just doesn't look full screen, but it did earlier, like, right? Because I'm seeing the slide and some buttons, and then the next slide in the corner. But at a couple of points, it looked full screen to me after, I thought you clicked display settings initially.
I think the issue we're having is that I can't simultaneously put it up on the big screen correctly and show it to you correctly. So at this point, I think that was, I think, what was binding us there, so we're just gonna go with this and...
Oh, yeah. Well, that looks good.
All right, folks, apologize for the minor delay. Interesting that we have the Zoom share screen up there. Just as a bit of a reminder for everybody, because I know this has been a bit of a blur, was on the 4th is when we made the declaration for emergency in the city of Capitola, and we also issued an evacuation order that afternoon for the lower village due to the storm that was forecasted for the next day. On the 5th is when we got hit. Thankfully, the rain event that was anticipated that night and that day didn't really come to pass at that point, but the swell did. The swell did significant damage to the city. City council, we held a special meeting the next day. City council ratified the emergency order. And then again, on the 7th, we began preparing for additional rain and the significant rain event that was forecasted for the 8th. We ordered a crane that was stationed on the bridge, closed during the day, through traffic, and we also ordered an evacuation that morning in the Capitola Village in coordination with County EOC. We had our emergency shelter open whenever we had the evacuation orders in place. And then on the 10th, we got a visit by Gavin Newsom, Governor Newsom. This is the evacuation zone. I think everybody is aware it was focused on the sort of lower River View section as well as the village. What we have done overall in storms since the last update is we obviously had the visit from the governor. We saw the president declare a FEMA emergency as well. We've been tracking expenses and employee hours, hoping, thinking, planning on reimbursement of FEMA and CAL-oes. We've been coordinating with the county, County Office of Emergency Services, as well as CAL-oes, to submit our initial estimate of expenditures and costs related to the emergency. In addition, we filed the claim with our insurance carrier for proper damages. Next item, we covered by, each staff member can kind of go through what they've been working on? Nikki, you're up.
Great. Good evening again, Mayor, council members. So to report on the shelter, as you know, we established the shelter in coordination with the county to provide mutual aid for the second round of the storms. As of this morning, we had three attendees that have been the same three attendees that we've had all week. And we had worked out an agreement with the county that they were providing our overnight staffing, and then the city has been doing staffing during the day. In my regular check-in this morning with the County EOC, we had a conversation around the available resources and other shelters, and were very aware from the beginning that the Capitola shelter was never really set up to be a long-term shelter. It was always temporary, and so needed to find better long-term accommodations for the three attendees. And so with that and communicating with them, we've identified that they chose to go ahead and elect to relocate to the fairgrounds, and as of noon today, posted that the shelter had its 24-hour notice and that we will be closing it as of noon tomorrow. There's still a lot of materials that are the counties that will be remaining in the shelter for a couple of days until the county is able to coordinate a pickup of those materials. Is there another one? I've also been working on volunteer coordination, and it has been out now for almost a week that we are interested in knowing contact information for any individuals that would like to be part of a volunteer initiative in order to help those that have been affected by this disaster, particularly the village. And so far, we have approximately 130 individuals that have emailed or called in, and some of those individuals also identify that they are part of a small group of individuals, so that's probably a much larger number. Staff is, at the moment, considering maybe the weekend of January 20th. However, there is a conflict with the tide, so trying to identify a date still proves a little challenging because we want to make sure that whatever we do does its purpose and provides support and healing for the individuals in a safe environment that is more of community building. So we are, staff is looking out, looking, looking towards some community partners that might be able to help in the coordination of this, and council can expect more information on that.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to just provide a little overview of kind of what the police department did over the last week or so. When the evacuation orders were finally issued, our staff was ready to go out and put the notices out. We did make personal contact with all the residents and businesses that were evacuated, so we had a team of officers go out and begin a systematical check-in and check, they would check with each person, get a name, phone number, if they're gonna, what their plans were, if they're gonna stay, if they weren't gonna stay. And we worked through, like I said, within a matter of just an hour and a half or so, about 400 addresses. And we did that when the evacuation order went into place, and we had the weather event. And at that point, there were some destructions. We basically provided security, kept the public back, and then maintained that security to allow our public works crew in there to do the cleanup that they needed to. And so most of that fencing has been removed. There is still an area that's contained. We continue, when we were in evacuation zone, we had a security that was out there. We continue to patrol it. As we kind of ramp up or ramp down, we just assess the needs there. If we do an order, we would bring in the security as well, and we also stand up our evacuation center. We've also been coordinating with the businesses and residents that have been impacted, just trying to get in the information and provide that conduit between the city and the community. And again, we're just continuing to provide security. We do, when we were really active during the event, we actually had a staff member that was up at the EOC that was providing information to us in our local EOC here. And so as we're doing that now, we can do a little bit of remote remount, so we're able to tune into those weekly, or it's daily updates. They kind of, as, like I said, we're in a phase right now where they've kind of ratcheted down, but as we see this next event that's coming tomorrow, we have another one, we'll kind of, we kind of wrap back up our efforts there. So again, as we look at this, we're adjusting, we're gonna have a high tide tonight. We're just continuing to monitor it. Like I said, if we do start doing evacuation orders, we just have things in place where we'll put someone up the EOC, we'll do our evacuation notices. We'll do our evacuation notices, stand up our center. So that's where we're at. Like I said, I think the city manager said we're not through this. We still have a couple more events that we're keeping in mind right now. So we're continuing to monitor it, and we're here for the community. So, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. To reiterate what the city manager and Chief Janet used to say, we are not over this. We are expecting a high tide early this morning and high surf for the weekend. And so we are very much still on high alert over in Public Works. Current actions that we have beyond just our regular storm drain cleaning and monitoring is we have fenced off the Esplanade to through traffic. So we have the fence protection for the businesses to do the work that they need to do. We've provided dumpsters for them to do the work that they need to do and still have public pedestrian access to the area. We're actively monitoring debris both in the creek and in our other waterways, on removing potential obstructions. You probably saw the crane that we had out on the Stockton Bridge to remove some of those obstructions earlier this week. Our crew very impressively cleaned up a lot of the debris in the village. It was ready to reopen within a day and a half to get residents and our businesses, the ones who were able to enter the residence and businesses back in there. I'm very proud of our crew and the work they've been doing. We continue to monitor erosion, particularly on Cliff Drive and Deep O'Call. We have a couple areas that are blocked off, so the public can't get to them. I frankly would expect more erosion over our next few storm events, and so actively monitoring that situation. Our River View pathway was severely damaged and remains closed, and will remain closed for quite some time. And like I said, there's been a lot of downed trees, downed power lines. PG&E has been really impacted and kind of slow to get out to everyone. And so our crews can't get in to remove trees and open up roads till PG&E tells us we're all safe. So I would expect that to continue with the ground saturation and the storms we're expecting in the near future. As far as known damages we have so far, there's quite a bit beyond just our, obviously, our poor, poor wharf. We have damage to quite a few other municipal facilities. These are really, really rough estimates. This is what was provided to CalOES via the county. I would expect these to go up as they are further assessed and we get kind of more detail of what's going on with those. But it will definitely be over $2 million worth of damages to our facilities. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, particularly on any of these items.
Good evening, mayor and council. Going to report out on the Building Department. Our Building Inspector and our Building Official have been extremely busy working with all of the businesses along the Esplanade, as well as homeowners throughout the Venetian and on the second stories of the Esplanade. We've been making a lot of progress. I want to thank PG&E, actually, for all of their... Today, when I went through the village, I felt like every fifth parking space had a PG&E truck in it. So they've been working diligently out there. And the coordination efforts between our Building Official and PG&E, especially TJ Welch, has been amazing. So over the past two days, we've really been focused on electrical, getting electrical back on the grid. And then today, that transferred into gas. So doing testing to ensure the gas lines, pressure testing to ensure gas lines are safe before they are allowed to have gas back into each structure. So we've continued to work after the direction you gave us last Friday. We have no-cost inspections and no-cost building reviews. We've put that into place. We're also doing emergency work. So for any testing or inspections that are happening, we're being on-site right now. We're not requiring that they come to the front desk and get their permit ahead of time. When they're ready for an inspection, we'll take in their permit at that time. So we're allowing emergency work without giving permits ahead of time as long as there's communication. And Robin Ruben, our Building Official, and Eric Martin have been amazing and on the ground, working with all of the business owners and residents. Also, yesterday, I attended a countywide business assistance meeting. That was actually an aftermath of COVID, where we're going to report back, following up on COVID. And then we said, well, it's time for us all. Everyone was back on that call and talking about next steps. Also, in our BIA meeting, just hearing that the businesses want the messaging out there, that a significant portion of the village is open. So we talked about that at our regional, at our countywide business meeting. And as soon as we get past these next two storms, everyone's going to make sure to update their messaging to get that out there for the county. Next slide, please. So in terms of numbers, right now, for residential structures, we have 15 yellow tags. We actually had to add three new ones to Cliff Drive yesterday because of erosion issues with a few homes there and one active red tag at the Venetian. All of those mean that they're not allowed to occupy the residence. But yellow tags, you can go in and do a certain amount of work, whatever specified on your yellow placard. And then for commercial structures, we started off with, I think it was four red and six yellow. Now they're all in yellow status. Everyone's allowed to do work, and they continue to go through the process. So we've made great progress with electric. We're now focused on gas. There has been... There's some larger impacts to sewer that we're hearing, though. But the plumbers are working on gas, sewer, and water in combination. So we are going to do emergency permits for sewer, allow them to do the work, and then we'll inspect the work once it's installed. So that's progressing and moving. So that's my update. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council questions for anybody?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, has the evacuation zone changed at all at this point? Should we have to evacuate again?
So currently, we're still in a warning with... So we work with the county. They have the program that's called Zone Haven. And this has broken up into four, basically, zones. They're very broad. And so unfortunately, it's the best messaging that we have right now. So the current... It's still in a warning zone right now. So we're not in an evacuation order or anything like that. It's still in a warning just with this upcoming event. So that's the current status that we're at right now.
So the E029, the village, is still under evacuation warning at this point? And are we sharing any of our resources at this point with any other cities or across the county to pop or anyone, anything like that?
I know that we're, like I said, we're embedded in the EOC, so we haven't been asked for any resources. The only resource that we were asked for was to stand up our shelter as a regional resource. And so that's the current...
Great. Thank you. Are we going to see the crane come back after this coming storm? Is there any talk?
At this point, I think we need to evaluate how effective we think it was. And then in addition, I think we just want to keep an eye on the forecast. I mean, you know, it'll come down to a day where we see five inches of rain in the forecast. The hills are saturated. I think you'll see the crane come back. But in lieu of that, we don't have that kind of forecast in the future right now. The surface of what has been worried.
Yeah. And just for the public's information, when we move into an evacuation order, is that coming from the city or is that coming from the EOC?
So evacuation orders in the city are governed by our operation here.
Great. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there was a mention about the expectation that there's going to be additional erosion as we go into the next storm system. And every time I walk past Britannia, I look at the trees behind the Swenson parking lot that are like on the side of a cliff. And I'm really concerned that one of those has kind of come down. Have we coordinated with Swenson at all to see if they're still allowing people to park there? Do we have any control over the safety? You know, would we have any liability even though that's not technically our property? I'm just... Every time I walk by there, I think, how have those trees not come down yet?
Sort of start... That is private property. But we do have the responsibility, being the city, to inspect and identify damaging, you know, potentially dangerous conditions. So we can take a look at it and see if we can have somebody evaluate the safety of those trees and see whether or not they're stable.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question for Nikki. I don't know if she's still here. You know, I probably have to come over. People have told me they tried to leave messages about volunteering, and we're unable to do so. I just wondered if we addressed that.
Yes, council members, but thank you for asking. We did have a situation where, because we had been previously on the winter break and city offices were closed, there was an away message that was set. And it had been set to not have voicemails be left. And as soon as we made that switch, people were able to leave voicemails. And the emails were always coming through, though. So we had a lot of people that had tried to leave a message at the community center. Were not able to leave that message and then went ahead and emailed me directly saying I couldn't leave a message. So hopefully, we have gotten most of those individuals that were not able, and they're on our list. If there is anybody else out there or anyone that you know of, I encourage you to go ahead and have them send me an email. We'd love to add them to our list.
Thank you, Nikki.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have we been able to do any preliminary inspections on the wharf at this point?
Again, so the wharf currently is inaccessible. We have had drone footage, very good drone footage from some volunteers for the wharf and have had our wharf consultant, who had been working on our greater project for improvements, examine those videos. We do have them coming out next week. So we will have the professionals to evaluate the wharf during low tide next week. But we have done some preliminary, which is where that estimate has come from. That million-dollar repair estimate has come from.
I think unfortunately tonight, the surf is large again with a high surf warning. We're probably going to get more damage tonight, unfortunately.
Great. Any more questions? Good. Okay, we can go to public comments if there's any out there or any on Zoom.
There is one public comment on Zoom. Request that Susan True, please unmute yourself. You're not allowed to speak.
Everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first, thank you for your leadership. What a great council to have and what an incredible city manager. I think he's been just in a fabulous job, too. So hats off to all of you. Can't believe how the city crews have just been cleaning everything up. I'm Susan True. I'm CEO of Community Foundation. And it's been my pleasure to work with your team to start a small business grants program initially. It will be focused just on the closed food services businesses. That was a decision made by Uof capital residents and business owners last night to narrow it. We will make $100,000 available next week in our first round. We are actively raising money at the Community Foundation, and we hope that more funds will become available soon. And then we'll release another round of grants right away. We're also working with our Family Resource Centers. The closest one to Capitola is the Community Bridges Libel Family Resource Center on 17th and Capitola. Residents of Capitola who have lost their housing or lost wages, even if they're not residents of Capitola, if capital employees have lost wages due to storms, they can go to a Family Resource Center or call the Family Resource Center. They'll have, go through a very brief assessment and get referred for a one-time direct cash assistance. That assistance will be prioritized for people who have first lost housing and wages, then lost wages, then lost housing, and then lost wages. So we're really focused there. We know why residents in the county have needs for assistance because of the level of damage their houses have happened. Until we are able to raise more money, though, this is what we're going to do first. And also, United Policy Holders is available to help residents with fee drop payments when those become available and with insurance claims to make sure that there are people to get all those residents that we do from their insurance. So we're trying to get resources up and running as quickly as possible. We think the Family Resource Centers are the easiest way for capital residents to go. And the smart process for businesses will be really simple. We should have decisions made by the end of next week and get funds to the suburbs anyway. So happy to answer any questions, but just really grateful for all the connections that the city's got. Because I need to make sure that the Community Foundation's work is really rooted in what our community wants.
Yes, thank you so much. Excuse me. Could you reiterate where the Family Resource Center is?
Yeah, the Libel Family Resource Center is closest to Capitola. And so Cal is located right off 17th and Capitola.
Okay.
And then at the intersection where Farrell's done it, some Libel super, Libel school.
Great.
And some people can know that it has a call 211 if they have warnings. 211 will probably route them to the Family Resource Centers. That's what I was suggesting, just going to the Family Resource Center.
Great. And then I know Kristen had mentioned earlier about figuring out how to apply for your funding. Is that on your website or?
It's not yet. We're going to meet with the Business Improvement District tomorrow morning. We'll have gales case trees in hand, we have two gales. And we'll talk with the business owners directly about it and then ask some help from Jerry Johnson and others to help do some door-to-door outreach about that. We think that there's far, far fewer resources than are people who will want them. So we're not going to do a huge broadcast of the application process right now. We'll just go door-to-door, really truly door-to-door. And I can send that link to the application if you have business owners that need it. It's just a super simple form. It shouldn't take them very long.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Susan. Your work has really helped us out a lot. And I think some other council members might have questions or comments. Mayor Kaiser, I know this is off the cusp, and generally, we don't speak to our public for questions, but I think this is really important. Susan, can you tell us a little bit more? I've seen some information about the flood recovery info sessions. Is that what you were talking about with the gales tomorrow at 4:00? Is that something different?
That's what I'm sorry. I just meant that was in response to a question about how businesses will know how to apply for these cases. That's tomorrow morning at the Business Improvement District. The other seminars, we had one today at 4:00. Those are hosted by Community Bridges. There'll be another one tomorrow at 4:00. We're going to make sure. It sounds like you have the flyers about that. Those are hosted by Community Bridges. They run most of the Family Resource Centers in town. And Community Action Board will actually be giving up the direct assistance, as well as United Policy Holders, who I mentioned, can help residents with insurance claims and eventually fee drop claims when the time comes. So it's going to be really helpful just to get a sense of, like, what should I do? How do I sign up to have volunteers help clean them up with my drive? Like, you know, how do I get money because I lost my wages because I was a dishwasher? It's always like, it should be, you know, a practical way to get, to help people wait fund. Those are being hosted by our friends at Community Bridges.
Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, come back. Mr. Woodside.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question with respect to the river path. I noticed on one of the slides that there's an estimate of damage to the river path. Is that the path that begins right at the eastern foot, crossing then on private property, but it's publicly accessible, and then extending all the way up to public property? I think at the very end, that's what you're referring to? So the question, I guess, is how do the homeowners along the way coordinate so that whatever we do to the path, it comes back in a usable manner? And I suppose many of us know who to talk to, but maybe for the general public, we don't all know, so.
Great. Thank you. Our Public Works Director can push us in the right direction. So any resident on that River View pathway can definitely contact me directly to coordinate any repairs or fixes. Because, yes, definitely, our intention is to have that whole pathway back open to the public, both the private property side and the public property side. So anyone can directly contact me. And in the coming days, we'll be directly contacting the residents. But in the short term, we haven't quite had time to get to that yet. Great. Thank you. Any other public comments?
We don't have any other speaker on the seat, mayor.
Okay, great. I can take it to council comments?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to first thank Captain Ryan for getting the information out on our social media regarding the evacuations and the entire team for really getting the info out to the entire public. I'd really like to see that again happen over the weekend and to continue to notify the rest of council on what's going on. And generally, we see that on our own personal social media, but it'd be nice to get that information direct from staff. I also really want to say thank you. A day and a half of cleanup, that is unreal. And it is hands-down a remarkable expression... and it is hands down a remarkable expression of community and hard work from our city and our staff. And I really, really, really am so grateful for, for all of that work that all of you have done and continue to do. I know that you're working 24 hours around the clock and answering personal emails and phone calls from not just us, from the community, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And so I just really wanna express my gratitude to, to all of you here. Our department heads, as well as the staff who are still out there cleaning up, preparing for the storms ahead. And to our public also for non-stop emailing, I'm sure all of us, about how they can help. We live in a very special community and, and I'm just so honored to be part of it. So thank you to, to everyone.
Great, yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I wanna say thanks to the city manager, all the staffers, the police department. I've got phone calls from people actually all over the world, just talking about Capitola and how remarkable we all came together. And just being a newcomer, it's really great to see and I'm glad to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo the thanks again to city staff and, and all the volunteers and our community members. And again, specifically to the city manager. I think I probably called or texted like, what, four times a day since the storm? I imagine everyone else up here probably the same. So thank you for being responsive to us as we attempt to be responsive to the community in addition to all of your responsiveness to the community. And really that goes for all of you and thank you so much.
Great. Alexander, do you have any comments?
Nothing that happens just said by all of the rest of you. It's just a, and in awe of how great the community is able to come together and really look out for each other and respond to the city was just amazing to see. So I think it's just a wonderful thing to see that it is probably how powerful our community really is.
Yes, definitely. And I will obviously be behind all of those comments as well. I think that we need to stay strong too, so make sure everybody is being nourished. I know a lot of local restaurants and things have fed a lot of our workers and that any more support in that way is gonna be huge, especially as we move forward with some impending weather. So hopefully, we can stay strong and don't lose faith and thank you, everybody. It really takes a village. I don't know if we need a roll call for this? Okay, no vote on that. So just again, thanks, everybody. I don't know what's happening in my voice, sorry. We can move on to item nine B, which is the regional bike share contract. The recommended action is to authorize a city manager to execute a five-year professional services agreement with B Cycle for the regional bike share program.
All right, give us a second, we're gonna try a different technique on the Zoom share.
I think at this point, Alexander should be able to see the full screen.
I think so.
We did it.
Yeah, I've been here too, great job.
And it seems like this mic works. Excellent. Okay, well, I'm really excited to bring this item forward to you tonight. The regional bike share is, has been a long, it's been a long time in the making, so. Next slide, please, Julie. Oh. So we've got three documents. We've got a bicycle plan for the City of Capitola, a general plan, and then also our climate action plan. And within all three plans, there is direction to collaborate towards bike sharing and more emphasis on sharing and there's goals towards getting more ridership of bikes in order to decrease our impact on the CO2 emissions. So the direction is there within, within those guiding documents within the City of Capitola. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, when I was putting together this slide and looking back to when did we really launch this? It was back in 2018, when we first went to city council, it was in the fall of 2018, to ask, should we get involved in bike share? At this time, the City of Santa Cruz had jump bikes had been launched. It was a successful program and we got direction from city council to yes, let's move forward, but let's do it right. So we, from there, we updated our municipal code in order to put in place protections to make sure that any bike share, future bike share program come in and there'd be one contract with the City of Capitola. And to make sure there was direction or guidance on how to park a bike, where bikes can be ridden on that side of the street and who can utilize sidewalks. And we updated our, the bicycle rules throughout Capitola in 2019. Then we published an RFP in collaboration with the county. Unfortunately, there were no viable options in terms of a no-cost solution to no-cost contract for the city. So we ended up and then COVID hit. So at that, at that point, we took a break. In 2021, actually later in 2022, a group of us started talking during COVID and discussing the possibility of a few of the entities working together. And then we decided, well, let's reach out to everyone in the county. And by 2021, we had a small working group for regional bike share. We published an RFI to get information on what, what providers could provide in terms of the whole system. And then once we got the findings of the request for information, we published an RFP. We had quite a few responses to our RFP. We interviewed three groups and part of that interview was actually riding bikes and getting out there, part of our homework. And in the end, we selected B Cycle as the top. Next slide, please. The key components that our regional group was looking for was a bike-only system. There was quite a few that came forward with scooters and bicycles. We wanted a single vendor for the whole region. We were looking at hybrid docked or dockless systems. I know our city council is very interested in docked, but on a regional scale, we were not all aligned on that. Also, we wanted it third-party owned and operated and to have no cost to the jurisdiction and also that they have a, a local team in order to manage the bicycles. And B Cycle fits all of these. Next slide, please. This is just an image of the bicycles that they'll be providing for the city. Also, the docking stations, they have a nice clean look. In terms of the bicycles, they do do some, they, like at Mencunias, they had an art project of the baskets having a certain, they had a contest, I believe, for artwork on the bikes. So they, they might be more colorful than this, but this is the actual product that we'll be getting. And I, I should mention that Oliver Davis and Brian Conger are on the Zoom call tonight from B Cycle and they can answer any questions you have regarding the bicycles. Next slide, please. So next, I'm gonna go into the contract. So a contract requires that the city council be approved of the contract and tonight we're asking for approval of a five-year agreement with B Cycle. The system is a docked system. It's region-wide, there'll be 660 e-bikes. And then for every e-bike, they put, they install two docks, so 1320. In Capitola, we are slated to have a minimum of 50 e-bikes and 100 docks. They, within the contract, there's the option to go up to 2,000 bikes region-wide. So we could end up, if it's very successful in Capitola, getting more bikes. The bikes are accessed through an online app. There's no cost to the jurisdiction and then after the two, first two years, there's a possibility of revenue share based on how much revenue that B Cycle is making. Next slide, please. For consumer protections, this was one of my focuses within the contract, was to ensure that our consumers are protected. So we have a maximum price increase limit. For the first two years, they cannot increase the price. After the first two years, there is an allowance for up to 10% per contract year or 3% plus CPI, whichever is less. Also, there are maintenance and repair standards within the contract, customer service, response times, standards for making sure bikes are available to customers, requirements for safety and education to, for consumers, and then also performance standards for the individual bicycles. The cost associated with this, one of the reasons why we chose B Cycle was because the, the costs were very, they're much better than the other proposals. The walk-up pass is $7 per each 30 minutes. So this is a person that does not have a monthly or annual pass. It's just $7 per 30 minutes with a daily maximum of $75. Monthly, you can get a pass for $30 for unlimited 30-minute trips. And then if you go over the 30 minutes, it's an extra $3 per 30 minutes. And then an annual pass for $150 with that same extra $3 for any time over 30 minutes. And then there's bulk number pricing programs for low-income students. I know UCSC has been working with B Cycle and they're, they're working on getting better pricing for their students, but they're also putting money towards the program the university is in order to decrease that pricing for students. Next slide, please. The timing here, B Cycle, when we first interviewed them and throughout the process, has said, we like to make sure our system is installed right and we like to make sure that all of our docks are in the correct, correct location. So it does take time as they study where the bikes are being taken from and deposited. So the first rollout is for UCSC and the City of Santa Cruz within six months. And then the rest of the region for Capitola, Watsonville, Cabrillo College and the County of Santa Cruz will be within 18 months. So we're, we're looking towards 2024, about early or throughout the summer. Next slide, please. Next slide. And then, oh, back one, sorry. So in terms of next steps, I'll be coming back to you. We've been doing some work with B Cycle internally, looking at locations for docking stations. So they're gonna be within our right-of-way and we're just looking for areas that will work with them. So Oliver has on the call, I know that he plans on coming out in the near future to help us with location. So this is just our first, our first look at locations, but we'll be fine-tuning this and getting it back to the city council for approval. And then any larger, if they have any signs or anything like that, that would go to planning commission. Next slide. So tonight, I'm asking for you to authorize the city manager to execute a five-year professional service agreement with B Cycle for the regional bike share program. With that, I'm available for questions and as I said, Oliver Davis is on the Zoom call with us and Brian Conger, both with B Cycle.
Thank you. Any council question? Yes. Katie, is this, what happened to the countywide effort to have all the same? Is this the same thing?
This is.
Okay, so the, in the report where it shows all the different information, that's this company and everyone, all the other cities got it.
Yep.
So who has, in the contract, does it authorize? Or does it say who's authorized to say we can remove a dock? Is that under our purview? Like if we have issues with the location after a year or so and we start getting complaints about it? Or is that up to the vendor?
So we would be issuing revocable encroachment permits. So it would be through our normal revocable encroachment permit process in which the permit itself is revocable. So if there were issues, we could work with B Cycle to modify where the location is.
And can you tell me a little bit about the, the process to complain, to give feedback? If there were, you know, is that coming to the city or is that going straight to the vendor? How do we, how would we approach that?
The complaints would go straight to the vendor. So I'm, but I'm sure as city staff, we will be getting phone calls as well. But there'll be phone numbers on the bicycles and on the docking stations informing the public of how they can contact B Cycle to put in a complaint. And then they'll report out to us and let us know of issues. And also, the public is welcome to, of course, reach out to our city staff and let us know if there's any issues.
Can you tell me a little bit about the dump, you know, a bike is dumped in a, in a spot and staff gets a call? Is it our public, public works generally is more easily, able, easily, more easily to get ahold of them versus sometimes a vendor? Can you tell me about how you, I'm sure you talked about it, so.
Sure. Well, one reason why we selected B Cycle is because the bicycle has to be docked at the end of the ride and it has to, it has to be parked in one of their docking stations. So if someone were to rent a bicycle and leave it somewhere, they would be paying a really large fee to B Cycle. So, and they'll also get notifications on their phone. I can let Oliver probably speak to this, but I think the rider would get notifications that you have to return the bike to a dock. So the, the beauty of this system is that they do have to be docked if they were to leave a bicycle somewhere. Oliver, could you explain what would happen there?
So, so first of all, our intention would never be to try to charge someone the full price of the bike without actually going through the steps of reaching out to them and trying to get the bike back. That's really not, would be our only focus is can we get our bike back? If so, we don't, we're out of business trying to charge anybody for the full price of the bike. With that said, there are, there's gonna be times where people leave bikes in, in places that affect, like you, you got mentioned there, public works. We will have a fully staffed team that is able to field those calls, take care of it themselves. If, and we will have, we will have ways and we're, we're working with several jurisdictions on, kind of with the outlets right now for people to reach our team directly and so that we can take care of that. Yeah, like Katie said, it's, there are ways of, if you don't dock the bike, if you don't dock your bike, we, we do within a certain period, reach out to whoever left it. There are also, we'll, we'll use some sort of, we don't have active GPS, so it's still on the bikes, but we do have some tracking devices where we can find where bikes are lost and maintain that and track it back.
Oliver, you, you just mentioned having staff available. Do you have a, do you have staff up here in Santa Cruz County available at this time?
Um, good question. We, so we, we actually, we're just finalizing our agreements. That kind of gives us to go ahead to hire staff. We're, we're, we're hoping to accept an offer, our first offer to the general manager that previously was working for the, the jump system. So we're, we're looking at doing that really quickly, but we will have a full staff team, so yes, answer your question.
So this question's for Katie, before we enter an agreement, Oliver mentioned that they're still working out some kinks in terms of process for picking up and things like that. Have you discussed that with, with the team on, on agreeing on something that's, you know, that they're not quite ready for, if we were to approve this evening and they're not quite all set up? Do we have maybe a timeline or should we wait? Have you guys talked about this at all?
So I think we're in a really good position where we'll be in phase two of the rollout. So phase one is UCSC and the City of Santa Cruz. So as much as we'd like to have bikes as soon as possible, I think they'll be working out a lot of the logistics of the system while doing the installations with UCSC. They're hoping to have their system in by summer in the City of Santa Cruz. So by the time we will be entering, we'll get our installations in 2024, when they'll definitely have staff, they'll have their local staff in place. That is part of the contract, that they have the local staff in place and a local warehouse. So I feel confident by the time we're in phase two, all the kinks will be worked out.
Mayor, this is my last question, thank you. So why would we enter them into a five-year contract now rather than waiting to see? Have you, why, why such a long contract?
Oh, well, basically, we're, we're a smaller city and it's, we wanna be involved in this contract. And by joining it now, we definitely have a seat at the table. I think I, I would accurately be speaking for B Cycle and saying that the majority of their profits, they expect at UCSC, City of Santa Cruz, where there's a much bigger population. But they're willing to do this regional contract where those bikes dispersed throughout the region. And we're all, I think we all realize that, that we wanna be involved and this is the time to be, to be signing the contracts, so that we're all in this together. So with our partners who have.
Mayor Kaiser, I'm so sorry. As a follow-up then. As a follow-up, then, this is for our first amount, that is there a clause in the contract for a way out should things go sideways in a year? Or by twenty twenty-four, if we learn something that doesn't go well with UC Santa Cruz? Or if we were to approve this, this evening?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. And I guess I'll add, without penalty, or what is the penalty?
I'm looking at the contract now. All of the attorneys for all of the agencies met multiple times about this contract. So it's been a while since we did that, so give me just a second. I, yes, there's a termination clause here. Yes, so the answer is yes, there's a termination clause. It allows us to terminate after a ninety-day notice, asking to cure the issue that's leading to the termination.
Without penalty or with penalty?
Give me just a second. I cannot imagine there's a penalty because we're not paying anything for the contract, but give me just a second.
I, I don't think there's a penalty, and there's also, sorry to interrupt. It's after the second year, it's a ninety-day notice of termination of the, of the contract.
That's right, after the second year, we give ninety days notice of termination. And I don't see a penalty in here. No, we can terminate for convenience, which means basically any reason.
Great, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
First is cost. It seems like for students or younger people who don't have bicycles or whatever, the cost seems a little bit high. For tourists, I'm sure they'll, they'll be used by the tourists here. But the cost is, is an issue and also where are we going to put the docking stations? If, you know, there's a nuisance and businesses don't like the location of them, how easy is it for us to move the docking stations? And how long will we be able to work on finding those locations for the docking stations?
So first, for cost, within the contract, there's a requirement that they, they work towards creating a program for low income, so at a lower cost. Also, special pricing for students, so that we did agree on. And in the past, I think they've worked with libraries to create special cards for undocumented folks or people without phones to be able to access the bicycles. So it's, I think they've had some good partnerships with libraries to make that special cost, put them in place so everyone has access. In terms of the docking, the locations, that will be coming to the city council. So I will be bringing you a large map of where we, and working very closely with our public works director and staff to identify locations and also working with Oliver. He knows what B-Cycle needs in terms of making, of locating a successful station. So there'll be a lot of work done upfront to make sure we're not placing them where they don't belong. And there was initial review back when we were considering going into contract with Jump back in twenty nineteen on this. So we've done some preliminary work on it, but now, once we have a contract, we'll really be getting into the final details. Jump, another reason we were impressed by their product is because of the way they can tie into different surfaces. So in areas that we might have pavers, they have a special way to tie into pavers. Where they have asphalt, there's a different treatment for asphalt. So, and there, maybe Oliver or Brian, if you could talk about if you did have to remove a docking station, what does that take? How often does this come up? And how do you react to those requests? Brian, you might be muted.
I, I can answer that though. So first, regarding removal of docks, we, we designed it to actually be really easy to install and really easy to take out. They're, they're less than initials that were driven in for each dock. But, so they are really easy to take in and to remove. It takes us usually less than thirty minutes to install a station. They are individual docks that are driven usually to concrete, and we can also do things on asphalt and on base plates. So, yeah, answer your question. Anytime we, if there is a need to remove a station, we're, we're used to it. It's, it's, it's not a problem for us. Just in terms of the cost, you can kind of allude to that as well. And before, we, we kind of, we operate in Santa Barbara as well, so we're trying to pull up some statistics just to be able to kind of share what, what costs in Santa Barbara looks like for us in the past year. So we looked at, the, the cost structure is the same in Santa Barbara that we're using in Santa Cruz, that's why I brought it up. But we looked at annual numbers along with monthly numbers. And like I said, the cost structure is the same. The, the annual and monthly numbers, they account for seventy-two percent of all rides in that system in twenty twenty-two. And the average cost per trip is actually only, it was two dollars and eighty cents. Per trip, it was a lot more cost-effective than kind of what you saw with like the walk-up pass where it's seven dollars per thirty minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we can go to public comment. There's any members of the public?
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, you're all the way over there.
For Oliver, are you planning or have you worked with businesses to put docks on private property as well? Because it seems to me that was a major use of the bike share program when you go into different businesses for work or for shopping. And specifically, I know there's a lot of, of surrounding that Polo Mall where you first have the corridor, which I think would be a really useful option for this type of service.
Yeah, that's a great question. We, we definitely do, and that's our goal and our plan. It's, each individual station, or each, each time we have to work with a, a private individual on stations, we have to do the contracting all individually, right? So if we, if we were to work with ten different private entities for ten different stations, in Capitola, for example, those have ten different contracts, whereas if we work just with the city right away up front, we can get a whole lot of stations, or a whole lot of options for stations. So that's what, that's what we're doing right now, Katie, is trying to figure out where stations would go and fill in the gaps with private companies. And that's our intention.
Got it. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I have a handful of questions here for you. And I'd like to just say, I'm really excited about this program. And I'm kind of coming for a bike share program, it's a very, a great service. I absolutely have concerns about the seven dollars per thirty minute. I hope that we can find a way to mitigate those prices for low income, especially those who may not have the ability to pay the thirty dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars for a subscription to access those cheaper prices. And I was curious, do you have any ideas about how much the low-income pricing might be or what that might look like?
So, but looking at our contract, it says that we have to work that out. Um, I, I don't have a, we don't have that prepared today.
I'd say you might admit a, an agreement like that in our city at this time.
Right, is my audio working there or no?
Yes.
Right, sorry about that, um, sorry for that. In Santa Barbara, which is, it's from like the pricing structure that we outlined for Santa Cruz, we have the same structure. We do have a low-income pass in the Santa Barbara market. That's a twenty-five dollar pass for unlimited sixty-minute trips. We can open, I mean, that's just a, an example of one that's in a, you know, market and similar in terms of just kind of based the program. So I think that could be something that you would be, you know, just a starting point, something that we can currently in a very similar market. I believe Katie referenced our partnership with libraries on the rubber market. So in our Madison, he starts in the program, which is where Oliver has kind of our own system. And also in our Nashville system, we partner with a library of branches, which basically it, it involves, we have a RFID card, which anybody can go in and check out with their library card. And that RFID card is what allows them to access the system. So they don't need a credit card, they don't actually need to sign up. It's just a system that we have put in place in partnership with the libraries to provide basically very low-barrier access. We also love that partnership because it is oftentimes communication use on people with a library for information and it's a trusted source of information. So for us, that's a great thing to be part of to work with so that people who will oftentimes have questions, can go in and get information and have access to a computer to learn more about the program. But then also directly get a free pass, at least in the partnerships that we've set up in similar markets we operate.
Okay, and have you worked with any businesses to offer a bulk pricing for employees? Are there discounts?
Yeah, that's, that's something to be part of work. Yeah, we do, uh, do have programs similar to that. A lot of that comes down to, you know, work with the general management will be hired. They would be, that would be within their purview to really be the point person for interested businesses. And like I mentioned, Santa Barbara's a similar program. We have business asks options there. And those are really oftentimes more brokered on a business-by-business basis through, through contacts with our local lead manager and owner.
Great, I just have one last question for you and then another question for staff. I'm assuming, and I haven't seen another bike share program, you won't be offering helmets, is that right? Is there?
We do not have an automated way to, you know, provide a helmet. At least when people walk in at the rent. We do strongly encourage users' helmets.
Right.
Uh, we're a parent, our parent company, so we're owned directly by Trek Bicycle. So Trek is the manufacturer, the bikes are made, obviously, if, if people are familiar with that company, we, we have bike shops, retailers in the area. So along the other markets, oftentimes, what we also do is encourage public users partnering with local retailers, directing people where they can purchase helmets and, and in some cases, giving helmets away as promo kind of items and events. So that's just something that we look really in from a safety perspective.
Great. And that would be really important to have some public outreach on, on B-Cycle and the city to encourage people to wear helmets and riding bicycles.
Councilmember Peterson, I just wanted to let you know that they also, they have a, they're working with Ecology Action. So they, they're partnering with them in terms of safety and getting the, you know, to, for safe practices in bicycle riding. So that, that was put together as part of the RFP and proposal, part of the proposal. So that's exciting for us to, you know, they've got local feet on the ground with safety measures.
Thank you. And, you know, my last question was, I was curious if all of the cities in the county are also engaging in a project contract with B-Cycle? Or that number of years was unique to that program?
That is the standard P S A agreement. So there's been kind of a joint negotiation, negotiation effort, which is across the jurisdictions. So right now, all of the jurisdictions are working off of the same model of public professional services agreement, which is the one that you and we have got. So it's true, there might be some very, very slight modifications to some of just, you know, we, we're trying to keep it consistent wherever we can, but, you know, the intention is that the, the vast majority of the agreements will be the same across markets, including the term.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any public comment?
We have one to do.
Great.
Allowing Paula Bradley to speak, if you can please unmute yourself, Paula.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Good, thank you. I'm also very excited that we might have the bike share program, although it sounds like a long wait for us, twenty twenty-four. I have three questions and I'm just going to tell you all three questions and then you can answer them. One of them is, do you have some statistics, statistics about the length of trips? Are the, are trips typically thirty minutes or they forty-five minutes, something like that? Another question, is there an age requirement to be able to use the bikes? And my last question is, what happens if I, I'm on my bike and I get a flat tire? Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can jump in and try and answer some of those questions, if that would help?
Yes, please.
Just a moment on the trip duration, I'm going to try and see if I can pull that. I mean, I'll answer it off in a general term. The majority of trips are still going to be short trips. So specifically, the included by time of membership passes is unlimited thirty-minute trip. So a lot of those trips, remember, specifically are very point A to point B type trip, under thirty minutes. I'm happy to follow up with more specific trip length metrics. And I think probably keeping it similar, we would look at our Santa Barbara system, which is a comparable market in some ways. But most memberships are at forty minutes. If you're looking at the walk-up casual pass, those are going to be closer towards the sixty-minute mark in terms of overall duration. Those might be a little bit more of the recreational ride, so more common that they might go over that thirty-minute threshold. But if you follow up with more detailed summaries, that would be helpful. Your second question, I believe, was about the age restriction. And I apologize, I want to say that our standard is, if someone here is based on the system that we're supporting, but fifteen years is our typical requirement for somebody to rent a bike, because there's a user agreement that they would have to sign off for. So that's at least for the, the age requirement for somebody to go through our user agreement. If somebody is under that age, they can have their, they're starting to sign off on that under half, which could allow them to be younger. But at least our standard is that eighteen would be the age to be able to sign off on the user agreement. We do have, I think, the third question was if you would get a flat tire while you're riding. We do design bikes in a way that we try and mitigate that as much as we can. We use a very kind of thick tire wall to be resistant to a lot of puncture flats. And we do have crews that go out and regularly maintain the bikes. But it is something that can happen, does happen, over the thousands of trips we'll be generating. If that were to happen while you were on your ride, the simplest thing to do would be is if you're near a station, if you can return it to a station and, and notify us, we would be certainly able to kind of adjust your trip, give a refund in that instance. It's not hostile to get a bike back to the station because of the flat. We are planning on bikes for Santa Cruz and Waco with a secondary cable lock, which would be intended to use for short-term, you know, convenience to temporarily secure the bike. So another option would be to secure the bike using the secondary cable lock, get a traditional bike rack, call in or text our customer service support line, and then just instruct them on where you lost the bike and we can, our in-city crew pick that bike up and, and adjust it.
Great, thank you so much. Any other, yeah, Mr. Wilk?
I'm Peter Wilk here. I, I'm glad you're allowing questions, because I don't have a comment, I have a question and it, it's along the lines of the helmet. So I can envision doing, wanting to rent this spontaneously, right? So you're saying, oh yeah, this is, get out of here, grab the bike. But I'm not going to have a helmet with me. So the question is, what is the law on helmet requirements? Is happy motorcycle helmet because it's an electric bike? You know, what, and what is the fine if I get busted by driving one of these things without a helmet? So I guess that's a question more for the police department, but I'd like to have a sense of when I can use these and when I can't, especially if I don't have a helmet.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have chief respond. Thank you.
So I know, you know, helmets are required for anyone that's under eighteen. Adults, it's a recommendation. There is a couple of things, I believe that the, there is a MUNI code and you can actually issue a citation, so we have a MUNI code violation. And the vehicle code also has a violation for like, you know, those that are underage. But clearly bicycle, helmets required if they're underaged.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. We can go to council comments or motion?
I have another comment.
Yes.
Probably one other question, but I just thought it would be very nice if the app had a single button you could click to report a mechanical issue with the bike. app had a single button you could click to report a mechanical issue with the bike rather than having to call or text the organization, which in my experience is always very tedious.
We do, that's great, that we do not, we have like a single button push to report an issue, but in the app you can access and report an issue. Um, there might be a couple of clicks involved, um but it is a support thing, so you don't necessarily need to get a live agent to take care of it, you can report it, pass it on, and then on that channel gets monitored by your whole um technician team.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, I'm I'm prepared to make a motion. Um, I I want to stress that we continue though to look at ensuring that if there's use of underage and whether it's in, I'm gonna get the right, e-cycles language or our language if an under someone of underage is utilizing the bike and what our safety precautions are for helmets, that's above me and whether we need to adjust our MUNI code to say that it's inclusive of a, you know, for these e-bikes or whatever it may be, I I I want to I want to make sure that we address that. Um, but while moving forward with uh authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year professional service agreement with e-cycle for the regional bike share program. And that's my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Can we have a roll of call, please?
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kaiser?
Aye. It passes unanimously. And we had item nine C removed from the agenda this evening, so we'll be moving on to nine D, which is the city council appointments to city advisory bodies. The recommended action is to appoint city council representatives to remain to remaining county and regional boards and support, oh my god, I can't read, and appoint members to of the public to the city of Capitola advisory bodies. Do we, I don't know what happened. Thanks for hanging on.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Just want to verify that, um, Councilwoman Peterson, can you see the screen okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. Well, we are back here again after a brief hiatus from the last meeting to review and make appointments to the city council representative or representatives on county and multi-jurisdictional boards and commissions, as well as make appointments of members of the public to the city's advisory bodies. We previously reviewed the Capitol representation on these groups on December eighth, and the city council elected to make appointments to some of the county and multi-jurisdictional boards and commissions, as well as the planning commission. Tonight, we'll review the remainder of these appointments, and as we move through the presentation, we will pause to allow time for council deliberation and action. So the city of Capitola is represented on various multi-jurisdictional advisory bodies by members of the city council. These boards and committees are established by other codes or bylaws. As I mentioned, on December eighth, the city council reviewed and made appointments to four of these groups. Tonight, for your consideration, is approval of representation on at least um five of these groups. We've also included representation on the criminal justice council. Um, the criminal justice council has a representative that will not expire until twenty twenty three, however, the council may elect to change their representation based on review of tonight's meeting. So at this time, I would ask that the council review and make appointments to the first five groups. The next meeting dates are listed on the screen, as well as current representative, representatives.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, advisory council of the area, aging urgency, I think.
One note I would like to make for this group in particular, I did inquire with the clerk of the board for that group, the representative for the advisory council of the area agency on aging does not need to be a council member. It is their recommendation that it continues to be a council member. However, a member of the public can be appointed to represent Capitola on this body.
Did we have anyone who was interested? Shock said he might remain.
I spoke with council, former councilmember Bertrand, and he has indicated that if the council would so choose, he would serve.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, me too.
All right.
Right, great. Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. Sanitation, that's a double, double open seat.
Correct, this one will require a primary appointment and an alternate appointment.
If anyone that wants to take a stab at it. Okay. Don't jump up. Okay, um, how do we, how do we go about this if nobody wants to?
Well, one suggestion could be you could figure out which ones people want to be on, and then you could draw straws for the others.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to table that one until we figure out what other people's interests are?
Sure.
Okay. All right, the library financing, we've got council, Vice Mayor Brown, and then we need an alternate. Any interest in an alternate?
I would like to be the alternate if Vice Mayor Brown.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
The Integrated Waste Management Task Force group previously had a staff member as the primary um representative. That staff member has retired from the city of Capitola. Um, public works director Jessica Khan has been working with the group um as in the interim, so we recommend that she continue to work with them as the primary, however, a council member is appointed as the alternate member.
Okay. And? And Director Yar, okay, staying on. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, are we gonna fill it in as we go or not?
With the screen sharing, it's gonna be challenging for you to switch from in and off.
No problem.
I will review the motion.
Okay.
At the end. I took any notes.
And then the library advisory commission has a, oh, that's expiring.
So the library advisory commission is a citizens' commission, represent each one of the jurisdictions, appoint somebody. Um, Michael Termini is our current deployment, he's indicated he's interested in serving again.
Okay, great. And then criminal justice, I've really enjoyed my time on the criminal justice council, but I feel like Councilmember Clark, having the expertise and experience in it, would better serve. And then Mayor Kaiser, if you don't mind, I would be happy to take over as an alternate.
Yeah.
I think it's a grab again.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, so sanitation. Let me look at that date real quick, if you don't mind. Um, what is the typical uh meeting cycle? Do we know?
I don't know how many a year. I don't know how many a year. You can see the meetings are usually during the late afternoon.
We'll look at.
And it is, it is comprised of the rest of the board of supervisors, I believe, and then Capitol City Council.
What do they do?
Uh.
Oh, sewer and water?
Sure.
Well, I'm only on the flood control district, I guess I could join this one too. Okay. Sign me up, I'll be your alternate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For a two recap, for the advisory council of the area agency on aging, former council member Bertrand will continue to serve as the appointee for Capitola. For the sanitation district, as primary member, we have Vice Mayor Brown, as alternate, we have Mayor Kaiser. Uh, for the library financing authority, as our primary member, we'll have Vice Mayor Brown, um with Councilmember Clark serving as alternate. For the integrated waste management task force, we will have public works director Jessica Khan and um Alexander Peterson as the alternate, or Councilmember Peterson as the alternate, excuse me. For the library advisory commission, we'll continue to have Michael Termini serve as the appointee for Capitola. And for the criminal justice council, we'll have Councilmember Clark and Vice Mayor Brown. At this time, staff would recommend a motion to approve these appointments.
Great.
Like to make a motion to pass these.
Thank you. All second. Great, we have um, we have a second, are you gonna say something?
No.
I'm absolutely not gonna say anything. We don't need public comment on this, do we?
Yeah, we do.
We do, yeah. So before we go further, why don't we reach out to the public for their comments?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Great. Well, before we did that, we had a motion and a second on the table, so why don't we do a roll of call?
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. That was nine D, which takes us to. Wait, we have more bodies. More bodies?
Oh, no!
Not yet. Really rushing things.
So the next part of this presentation is going to focus on these city's advisory bodies. And so Capitola has established multiple city advisory bodies that assist and advise in formulating policy for the city. Appointments are made depending on bylaws or the municipal code. So previously, on December eighth, the city council reviewed and made appointments to the planning commission in accordance with Capitola municipal code. Tonight, we'll review the remaining four bodies that need appointments made. Um, the city clerk's office received seven applications for new appointees to these bodies and eight requests for reappointment. These bodies allow members of the public to participate in city government as volunteers, and they are really valuable for feedback and communication between city members of community and staff. The advisory bodies listed on the screen are the ones that currently have vacancies. There is a difference between regularly scheduled vacancies and unscheduled vacancies. Unscheduled vacancies occur when a member of an advisory body quits or leaves their term early, and then regularly scheduled vacancies are when vacancies term out. So each person is appointed for a set term, and then when the term expires, we need to reappoint them or appoint somebody else to fill that position. So as you can see on the screen, there are four bodies with remaining terms that need to be filled. We're gonna move through each of these bodies and we will make a motion for each of them in turn, so we'll take pauses in between. The first one is going to be the arts and cultural commission. So as you can see here, we have three members who are seeking reappointment and two members who have resigned. So this leaves two um vacancies, and for those, we received one new applicant. So for the arts and cultural commission, staff recommends making four appointments. So bear in mind, there are three members who have requested reappointment, and there's one person who has requested appointment to this group. All four of these terms will expire in December of twenty twenty four, as it's a two-year term. Would you like me to return to the previous?
Please, thank you. Uh, do you want, do we need public comment on each of these bodies? City attorney, city manager, do we need to take public comment on each of these appointments to each, so like before I make a motion to appoint this person, this person, this person, do we need to go out to public comment?
It's gonna be the the microphone by the presentation computer right there.
It's a wild night. Uh, so what I would recommend is, um, similar to what you did with the last portion of the presentation, deciding, every time you take action, a vote, you need to take public comment, so you can. If we could just get consensus on who do we appoint, go to the next body, get consensus, and then when we get to the very end, make a motion to approve all the things we just agreed on and then take public comment for the motion. That's that's one way to do it, that's probably the most efficient approach. Alternatively, you could vote on each body, which would take public comment four times. So it's, the mayor can decide, but that's likely the most efficient route. Yeah, let's go with that route.
Great. In that case, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next group, which is the commission on the environment.
I get feedback on the first one, so we can. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're gonna like say, let's appoint these people, if we all agree, we'll move on, but we won't actually vote until the end. Can we do it that way? Is that a, that's what I understand. Okay, can do, yeah. Let's do it.
Okay, so I'd like to suggest moving forward with the three seeking reappointment, as well as Mr. Wilk for this particular um arts and cultural commission. And that's just my comment before we go out to public comment. It's just my comment.
That's okay with me?
Okay.
Great. Everyone, cool.
In that case, we will go ahead and move on to the commission on the environment. And we'll make the motion and then vote at the very end of all four groups. So for the commission on the environment, this is a body that has four people seeking reappointment, it's a two-year term, there's also one new applicant. So there are five, five total applicants for four spots. Staff recommends making four appointments for terms expiring in December of twenty twenty four. You have a selection of five people who are volunteering to serve on this committee.
My comment would be to appoint the Miss uh Meredith Keith, Jason Shepperson, Michelle Burtzoff, and Anthony Lassnermire, Lassnermire, for this particular commission. That's my comment on the commission on the environment.
Do we know the, do you know the new applicant?
Anthony would be my appointee if I had.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, is this a, so in that case, doesn't it just, isn't it just Alexander and Joe that get to choose the new appointments, since Brooks, Brown, and, oh, it looks like these are based on specific people?
Right, so for this group, um, we do have a council representative to this group, and I believe it's um Mayor Kaiser, so the remaining four members of the council would each get one.
Oh, I see, so so Alexander, Joe, Yvette, and myself need to choose our own individual?
Correct, because your previous appointees' terms expired, so it's time for a new person.
I say, no, I didn't know.
Yeah, my apologies. I, my comment would be to move forward with Michelle again, who's seeking reappointment.
I'd like to reappoint Peter Wilk.
And then, oh.
And my appointment would be Anthony.
And I'll stick with uh Jason Shepperson.
Thank you. The next group is going to be the finance advisory commission. So for this group, we have two members who are seeking reappointment, and we have three positions that did not apply for reappointment and need to be filled. Um, one of those is Councilmember Peterson's seat, which he vacated when he accepted his position on the city council. For this group, we received five new applicants, as well as the two who are seeking appointment. So it's a, um, there's an active decision to be made here between all of the seven people who wish to serve.
Right, no, I, yeah.
Staff recommends making five appointments to the finance advisory committee. The terms will expire in December of twenty twenty four. To recap, you have two people who are seeking reappointment and five people who are seeking appointment.
Madam Mayor, so you may recall that the finance advisory committee, in its bylaws, the mayor and vice mayor serve as members of the finance advisory committee, and then the other three members in the council point to the fact.
Yes.
Um, but there's language, I believe, that says that if the mayor and vice mayor don't want to serve, other people can step in. So my understanding is, is that Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Peterson are the council's representatives? So the other three of you then would be able to choose among the applicants to appoint?
Thank you. Um, I believe my appointee reapplied, Anthony Robi, so I'll stick with that, please. Can we go back to the names, just so, I mean, I know I'm not appointing, but.
So these are the names of the new applicants, I couldn't get it all to fit on one slide here, but we have the two people who are reapplying, and then the five new. I would like to move, um, make my appointment as Michelle Kaufman.
Do I steal yours?
Surprise!
I have uh.
Who are the ones?
Can you box back to the?
If if Laura Alwold is seeking an early appointment?
She is.
Yes, I'd like to have her as my appointee.
Great.
So, so then there's one other nuance here, I'm sorry, were you about to?
There's two more spots that need to be filled.
And those are the business representatives, right?
Correct.
And who are the applicants for the business representative position?
I have to pull up the applications really quickly. Bear with me one moment as I do that.
Is that an entire council consensus, or is that still just the people?
That's the full consensus.
Well, one of the business reps is seeking reappointment, right?
Yeah, maybe I have to switch my, my.
Oh, yeah, because you made him your appointment, all right.
Um, while while you're looking that up, I have a question. Do we still have a student rep on finance? Do we have any students apply for finance committee? Or are we gonna advertise for that again? We did not receive any student applications for the finance advisory committee, and I don't believe there are any current student members on the finance advisory committee, there is one.
Yeah. Is he still there?
Yes.
Oh, well, there you go. Do they have, do they have, do they have terms on their appointment, students? Oh, I'm waiting. Do they have, do they have, do they have terms on their appointment, students?
So they go to college?
I don't believe they're voting members.
They're ex officio members.
So if they're not voting members, it's a little bit different.
Okay. Good refresher. Wait, so is Michelle a business? Is it the same young man that's been on it for like four years?
Yes.
Wow, that's impressive. We have to convince people up here to be on the finance advisory committee, so the fact that he's been there for four years is quite impressive. Applications are, oh, no offense, Jim.
So one option would be, you may remember that we expanded the number of business representatives recently, this last year, I think it was, in the finance advisory committee?
Right.
Dina and Michelle Kauf, I think Michelle.
She's not business.
Okay, if we bounce back to the last slide, we could see who the current business representative was. Who is seeking reappointment?
So both of our business representatives are not seeking reappointment because one of them was appointed to council. Councilmember Peterson was a business representative. And then Alexandra Dale did not apply for reappointment, and she was the other business representative. And that was the newly appointed business representative during the last appointment cycle to the fact.
All right. So we may need to continue recruitment for the business representative. In the past, we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce on that one? So should we move?
On, on the applications, I can see that the applicants did not specify whether they were business or at-large. Of the new applicants, Diana Varkatos is a retired member of the community. Enrique Dolmo is a member of the community, but he did not indicate if he was a business representative. Michelle Kaufman applied as an at-large member. She didn't indicate at-large. Dana Masso Poust did not indicate whether or not she was a business representative or an at-large member. And Peter Wilk is also at-large, indicated such on his application.
So it sounds like what we need to do is continue to advertise for the business representative, and we can reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, because I think historically, the Chamber of Commerce would nominate an individual for us to appoint.
I'm reading Diana's. Professionals, okay, yes, sorry. Yeah, I think, we, can we appoint what we already discussed and then go back out for the business representatives? Okay.
That brings us to the last group of the evening, which is the historical museum board. The current composition of the board shows that there are two members who resigned creating unscheduled vacancies, and we did receive two applications for this board. And the new applicant names are listed on the screen.
I say that we appoint the two new people that want to be on the board?
Yeah, Roger Wyant.
So to recap, the appointments made so far through council's recommendation. Beginning with the arts and cultural commission, we have the reappointment of James Wallace, Kelly Zunder, and Roy Johnson, and the appointment of Peter Wilk. With the commission on the environment, we have the reappointment of Michelle Baritzhof Law, Peter Wilk, Anthony Rovai, or, I'm sorry, Anthony Lassanier, and Jason Shepherdson. And then for the finance advisory committee, we have the appointment of Anthony Rovai, Michelle Kaufman, and Laura Alioto. And for the historical museum board, we have the appointment of Enrique Dolmo and Roger Wyant. So at this time, staff recommends making a motion and taking public comment.
Public action. Yes, thank you so much. Do we have public comment? Anything?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Perfect. Council, do we have a, I'll move approval of the recommended appointments to the city advisory bodies.
I'll second it.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Can we do roll call, please?
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kaiser?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Do we have anything else? Lovely. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for hanging in there this evening. We can go to item ten, which takes us to adjournment. So this meeting is adjourned. Be safe out there. Yeah. Done. Use it if you got it.
You have to call someone, tell them you both were.
I'll tell them I stole it on accident. I don't mean to. Mics are hot. Okay. So we're just embarrassing ourselves amongst each other now.